I need to sign all of these. Let me hold that back a minute.
There's just two of them.
Dwayne, tell Jason to come here just a second. I put this card in and it's telling me I got it formatted on the printer or something. I'm trying to see if this one is that. Run one. All right, this one should be okay. Okay, well then, I mean, they've never come like that. That's strange.
We good now? Okay. We got Mr. Paulie, Mr. Trap on?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order if everyone's ready. First, we have the approve. Well, I'd like to welcome everyone to today's date is November the ninth, twenty twenty. Regular schedule Fairfield County Council meeting. First, I have the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved improperly. Second, any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now down to the invocation, Councilmember Bell.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we just come to say thank you for your blessings. God, you have been good to us. We ask you continue your blessings and guidance as we go through this meeting here tonight. God, there's so many suffering with the COVID- nineteen all over this nation. Oh, God, we pray for for safety for so many. And Father, we pray for the President-elect and the Vice President-elect of this country. As we pray for this council and these new council members elects, we pray that you keep us, guide us, and strengthen us and give us guidance. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Bell. Now down to the approval of minutes dated regular meeting October twelfth, twenty twenty, and special meeting dated October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Sure.
Been moved improperly. Second, any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. There are no public presentations. We have two items for public hearing. Item A is an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance number five-nine-nine to provide for the zoning reclassification from I-one Industrial District to B-two General Business District of eight-point-three acres owned by Eduardo and Wanda Huertas, the applicants. This is tax map number one-eight-four-dash-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-dash-one-one-one-dash-zero-zero-zero. This property is located at thirty-one oh three East Peach Road, Ridgeway, South Carolina, two-nine-one-three-oh. We'll go ahead and open up this public hearing up at six-zero-three. Ms. Davis, anyone sign to speak or send up information?
No one signed to speak.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and close this public hearing at six-zero-three. Now down to item B, an ordinance setting the millet rate for Fairfield County for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty. We'll go ahead and open this public hearing up at six-zero-four. Ms. Davis, anyone sending a notification to speak?
No one signed to speak.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing up for the millet at six-zero-four also. Now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. We have three. Item A is a third and final reading of ordinance number seven-five-eight, an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance number five-nine-nine to provide for the zoning reclassification from I-one Industrial District to B-two General Business District of eight-point-three acres owned by Eduardo and Wanda Huertas, the applicants. This is tax map number one-eight-four-dash-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-dash-one-one-one-dash-zero-zero-zero. This property is located at thirty-one oh three East Peach Road, located in Ridgeway, South Carolina, two-nine-one-three-oh. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
It's been moved improperly. Second, any discussion from council? If not, Mr. Clausen, you can just give us a quick, brief, brief, just for public knowledge, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Again, this rezoning request was brought by the Huertas because their property was zoned I-one, which that industrial district does not allow for a residential dwelling. So B-two is allowed by the comprehensive plan, and it does allow for a residential dwelling. So this request is to bring that proposed use in line. So the Huertas are looking forward to pulling a permit in short order, so.
Okay.
And Mr. Clausen, that has been for the planning commission properly posted?
Yes.
And the planning commission did vote to move this forward?
Yes, it did. There were six members, so six to zero in favor, so.
Any further comments, council? If no further comments, all those in favor of third and final reading ordinance number seven-five-eight signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now down to item B, third and final reading ordinance number seven-five-nine, an ordinance setting the millet rate for Fairfield County for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion?
No move, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved improperly. Seconded. Discussion, I guess, for right now, we'll turn it over to Ms.
Essentially, we're setting the mills at one-hundred-and-eighty-one-point-eight mills, which will generate twenty-six million, two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars, which is sufficient to cover the budget that was previously passed.
Okay. Any discussion from council?
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes, sir, Ms. Paul.
I would just encourage every council member with all everything that we going through with the pandemic and everything else, for the millage to stay the same and look out for the citizens of Fairfield County.
And I did not mention that, but this is the same as it had been previously. It has not been. The millage has not been increased in a number of years.
Six years of them, quarter last.
That's correct.
Six years.
Six years, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. If there are no further discussion, all those in favor of third and final reading ordinance number seven-five-nine signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now down to item C, emergency ordinance number seven-six-zero, an emergency ordinance to declare a local state of emergency in Fairfield County and providing for conducting electronic meetings for Fairfield County Council and all Fairfield County Boards and Commissions. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Seconded.
It's been moved improperly. Seconded. Discussion, I guess, Ms. Morgan, just to reiterate from previous.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Again, you have before you an emergency ordinance that this council has previously passed many times before. As the pandemic continues, the COVID-nineteen considerations, state of emergency still exists according to the governor. So what this emergency ordinance does is extends those terms that have previously been provided for another at least sixty days. It will automatically expire after the sixty-first day of passage, and again, provides for digital attendance of meetings, voting, comments, and so on and so forth.
All right. Question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bell.
One of the things we're gonna end up having to do because of the election, so we're gonna have to bring some additional people in, I guess, during that time. Will we meet before that to establish another meeting? Because I don't know, what date in January do we meet? The eleventh?
The eleventh.
So that'd be beyond the sixty-first day. And I know the people will probably get, they can get the offer of office on January one, but what do we do in case they don't do that and is looking to come to the meeting?
Mr. Bell, just want to make sure I understand your question correctly. You're concerned that by the time that the first meeting of the new council takes place on January eleventh of twenty twenty-one, that this emergency ordinance will have expired prior to then. And I will have to double-check the dates. I mean, just looking at the calendar, it looks like it would be sixty-two days. And I haven't done the math, but assuming that's to be the case, this council could at the next meeting in December extend it, so that way it automatically goes into effect. And then it covers the first meeting on January eleventh. That would be, in my opinion, the easiest way to handle this particular issue. And so that way it provides for continuity and then for the new council to come in and make any decisions that they feel necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Robinson, can we make sure that we have this on the agenda for the next meeting tonight?
Yes, sir, and I'm sure you was getting at maybe wanting to bring a spouse or
Right.
so forth and so on. So I'm sure we can accommodate that.
Thank you.
At least a spouse or something like that, so. Any further discussion? Emergency ordinance seven-six-zero. If no further, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item A, board and commission minutes each council member should have received as information.
Mr. Chair.
If any questions, yes, sir, Mr. Bell.
I have some, just some questions on the, on the Chamber of Commerce minutes.
Yes, sir.
One of the things it says in there, he says Retail Systems Incorporated Fairfield County Council asks the Chamber of Commerce, asks the Chamber to create e-commerce for county merchants. Mike Moore of Retail System made a presentation of how this could be done. The county will ultimately pay for their services. I don't remember that. I don't remember we voting to do that.
We did not, Mr. Bell.
Okay, so that, so anyway, they need to correct their minutes.
Well, I can't correct their minutes if
No, I'm saying, the Chamber of Commerce need to correct their minutes.
But if it was stated in their meeting, I mean, that doesn't make it true.
Right, I understand. And then, and they also said in their minutes, we have partnered with NP Strategy to advocate for the penny sales tax referendum that is being voted for on for Fairfield County. They're saying that they had a consultant firm to advocate for the penny sales tax. Nothing we can do about that, but that's what they're saying they did.
What are you getting at, Mr. Bell?
You know, one of the things that happened is when you get a consultant firm, one of the first things they look at is vulnerabilities. I worked with them several times. And you look and see how you penetrate and how you get your message across. So if they did that to the citizens of this county, I think that is, you know, I don't want to try to pass judgment, but I don't think that was a good thing. Thank you.
Any further discussion or comments in reference to Chamber Commerce Minutes? If not, there are no board and commission appointments. Now down to old business. We have two items, discussion and approval of sales listing agreement for county properties at the former Fairfield Memorial Hospital site. Do I have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved improperly. Seconded. Discussion.
Yes, this is simply an extension of an existing agreement that we have with ROI Real Estate. When we purchased the properties at the hospital, it was never our intent to go into the real estate business long-term or own those and lease those long-term. We bought those to essentially help stabilize the hospital until the period where we had Providence opened. ROI, as I understand it, is also has a contract. They also have a contract on the portions of the property at the hospital site that we did not purchase. So it made sense as they were trying to market the old portion of the hospital that they also tried to market in conjunction, the parcels that the county bought. And so that's what this is, and that's why we have the arrangement with ROI. And again, the contract just allows for an automatic extension of another year, so October thirtieth, twenty twenty-one is when the contract would extend to.
Any further discussion from council? Any questions? So this contract's pretty much an extension, basically. Okay.
Mr. Morgan, do you have anything else to add to that?
Okay.
That's it.
All right, all those in favor of sales and listing agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Now down to item B. We have Mr. Jason Pope from Fairfield Fire Services. He's requesting for supplemental appropriation pertaining to Lake Watery Fire Station. Do I have a motion?
No move.
It's been moved improperly. Seconded. Any discussion? I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Pope.
Thank you, Chairman Robinson, members of council. The, in the request for action, you'll see that this project originally started sometime, I think, in two thousand seventeen. It was before I came to work here. And this project was funded at a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. We, we had several issues. You remember getting land. We did that. This project didn't really start until this year. And we did, as we got started with the project, we quickly realized that a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars was not going to be enough. We tried actually to make it work. The, one of the, I worked with our previous Public Works Director. We were trying to keep the site under one acre. If we could have kept the site disturbance less than one acre, it would have cost us a lot less money on the engineering fees and environmental studies and the drainage plans and stuff. We actually went and cleared one acre and set measurements and set stakes of where the building would sit. And all of us, between me, Public Works, Mr. Bill Coleman, one of our engineer partners, we all looked at it and said, this ain't gonna work. It's not big enough. Just, it's not big enough. We tried. And so we proceeded with using the full two acres, and so that means our engineering costs went up significantly because we had to get extra permits and drainage studies and so on, and all this engineering stuff. It's way over my head, but smart people get paid to do it. And so the, the project, we really, we quickly realized this is not going to be enough to do this project. And so we're asking for the additional two-hundred thousand dollars. If funded on the property, this will get the entire, it'd be a four-bay fire station. I have actually some floor plans. They're basically just conceptual plans at this point. But will get us a full four-bay station with, which is what we wanted from the beginning. It will put bathrooms and showers and actually living quarters in this building for future potential twenty-four-seven employees. Maybe we put, you know, full-time firemen there one day. And when, as soon as we put living quarters in the building, you have to have a fire sprinkler system in the building. So all that costs money. And so that's what we're asking for. I'll be glad, if you have any more detailed questions about it, I'd be glad to answer them. I've got some numbers here if you'd just like to know, but that's what we're asking for.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bell.
Mr. Johnson, I don't want to bother you much, Mr. Taylor, but you know, one of the things I guess I noticed is, is that there was no recommendation from the administration, nor was there any recommendation. I know we talked about that today, nor was there any recommendation from the Administration Finance Committee.
That is correct. Mr. Bell, I decided to bring it to full council because that was my decision.
Okay, so, so how does the administration feel?
Essentially, when Mr. Pope brought this to us and said that he just did not think he could do it for one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, we discussed a number of different options. And we did look at just trying to keep it at one-seventy-five and doing the bare minimum. But our thoughts were that if we did that, we didn't think anybody would be happy with what the result of what we built would be. And so I asked Mr. Pope, I said, please, get us some options together. And you can let council know that if we try to do it at one-seventy-five, you're going to get something that you're really not going to be, it's not going to be as functional as what we need, nor would I think council be proud to stand in front of it.
Basically, a half a gym.
It would.
And plus the fact it's not going to cost seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars like two other ones we put there, yeah.
Chairman just said we got beat up because when some of these recreation centers were built, nobody was satisfied with a half-court basketball. So I asked Mr. Pope, I said, well, let's put together some options to bring back to council to see what, what they think they could support at a financial level and what they would be happy with as far as an end product. Something that, because we're moving in a lot of ways with some of the other fire stations trying to put living quarters in them. I think we've done it at Lebanon, and we're trying to schedule it on a yearly basis to take these fire departments to the next level so we can have good service, good buildings for our volunteer firemen and hopefully eventually some more paid fire staff. And so that's essentially what.
So you were recommending it, then?
I am recommending that we do something better than the bare bones because I don't think, I think in the end, we would end up going back to spend money just like we're doing on these recreation centers. With the recreation centers, we ended up cutting them down and cutting them down, and now we're having to go back and add and fix what we cut out. So I don't want to be put back in that same situation. I want to go ahead and let you all know, yes, if you really want to stick to the one-seventy-five, we can do that, but we will end up again spending money on the tail end to fix things, and you won't be happy with the product, I don't think.
And trying to be able to make a really good decision on this today, I started beginning asking questions. One of the questions that I asked was, how much money do we have in fund balance? I was told tonight, though, it will not come out of the normal fund balance. It will come out of the project fund balance. And so in that fund balance, we have about eight-hundred thousand dollars.
That is correct.
But now, one of the things that was alarming that I did find out is that we only have four million, six-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars in the regular fund balance. When during the budget time, we were around twenty-four million.
That's correct.
You want to explain the reason why?
I'll let finance, if they're better at explaining than I am. But basically, that's when taxes come in, we float high. And we're at the end of the tax cycle year, we scrub bottom. And right now, with the fact that we have, still have that four million pulled out in escrow or three and a half million pulled out.
Yeah, we talked about that.
That even makes it look like it's lower because that's the money set aside for the hospital. And that's why we're trying to get that released, and that will bump us back up so we don't scrub bottom so, so low.
Okay, and one of the things is, is that we are below, we are currently below the three-month threshold.
County Association and Municipal Association, they say you should always have in reserve operations for three months. And yes, we are below that, and we would not like, we do not like being there.
But again, since going back to the fire department, I've discussed with, with Mr. Pope, I guess, on several occasions. And what we are trying to do is trying to get, trying to get, set the fire stations up in such a way that we can have firefighters to be able to stay there because of all the stuff that we got to do and trying to maintain. And they got to take showers when they go to fires and all that kind of stuff. So I understand what he's trying to do, so.
Only thing I got is I quote Mr. Trap. He said, you want nice things, it costs money, so.
And this is not just, you referred to the rec centers. This is no comparison to the rec centers. This is a necessity, a life necessity. And so we want it to be the best, the highest quality. We also know that we have a need for volunteer firemen. We have a need for either other firemen in time to come. So we have to know and be assured that we are doing what's best because this is something that's going to affect everybody, whether they like it, don't like it, are buying to it or not, it will affect everybody. Yes, ma'am. And another thing is, and we, you know, within the fire service, I guess in that area, in the last two years, we've not had a fire, structured fire. Am I correct?
I don't have the data right in front of me, Mr. Bell, but.
Yeah, but anyway, we have to plan for the future.
What areas this will be servicing again, just to reiterate?
It's the, it's the, the location is near River Road and Windmill Road, so it's the southern end of Lake Watery area. And that, that area butts up to southeastern area, which is right next door to it, so.
Take it back on that when you're asking what area will this service, you are potentially setting in that area, but whatever happens in Fairfield County, you will be there.
Yes, ma'am.
You are situated, you are situated at one point.
Right.
But your service is for the county.
Absolutely.
There's a certain part of Lake Watery that's not covered by fire service. And putting this fire station where we're putting it, it'll cover the rest, and they'll be covered just like everybody else at Lake Watery.
And hopefully lower their insurance rates.
Significantly, right, yeah.
Mr. Paul, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I agree. Fire service is a number-one priority in Fairfield County, and we need to do our best to do it right the first time.
Yes, sir. Sounds good. Any further from council? If nothing further, all those in favor of the, I think it was one-seventy-five, am I correct? Two-hundred?
Two-hundred, one-seventy-five.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the addition added to signify by saying aye. Sounds like seven-oh, yeah, all right.
Thank you very much. One other announcement, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Just so all council knows, our office has relocated thanks to the support of our administration, our building maintenance staff. We are, we used to be in the voter registration building on Main Street. We're now in the, and where Fairfield Medical Associates is, Dr. Gaddy's office. We're the first level, the ground level of Multry Street. We're on the two ends. There are two suites. If you're in the area, please come by and see our new place. It looks really good, and we're really thankful for that, that move to be able to happen. So y'all come by and see us.
Thank you.
You all did a good job on it. I haven't seen it yet because I know what you can do.
Come by and see us, Mr. Robinson.
I will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. There is no old business. Now down to our county administrator's report. Mr. Taylor.
Yes, just one action, and I will ask Mr. Jonathan Burrows to come up and give a brief counsel on this, give a discussion, answer any questions. We do have a request of action, which the staff did recommend that council approve. It's for the purchase of a twenty-twenty-four F-two-fifty. I think we do have, Jonathan, if you could discuss the details, a significant amount of grant money to cover the majority of the purchase. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Thanks, Mr. Councilman and council members. We, it's twenty thousand was the grant that was awarded through solid waste and de-hec, and there's, the difference would be seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars to cover the purchase of the vehicle, of the truck, to replace the older vehicle we talked about with issues, rebuilt transmission, and more, more problems on the horizon. So we're gonna, we kind of, we're gonna keep that one on the fleet to use until it's, you know, is its last day.
Sounds good.
I saw a move, Mr. Chair.
All right, been moved improperly. Seconded. Anything else from council? I think it's only seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars addition. If no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any, any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There is no clerk to council's report. Now down to county council time. Any council members likely recognized?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Douglas, yes, sir.
It took, when Mr. Bell asked questions about millage and millage rate and all that kind of stuff last week, it took him a couple of days to understand what he was talking about because he was confused just like it sounded.
I'm not confused.
The mill value has nothing to do with the millage rate of the taxes. The mill value shows that the county is in good shape. Last year, the mill value was around a hundred-and-sixty-two, but because Dominion has cut down on money we're getting from the V.C. Salmon Euclid Plant now is down into one-fifties. And the millage rate on taxes has been the same for the last six years. Now, your taxes this year should be almost like the taxes last year. The only difference would be of the amount of credit you're getting on the one-cent, the portion of the one-cent sales tax that you get each year. If it's lower, it's because we didn't get as much money on the sales tax. If it's higher, we did. Now, the taxes will be the same this, this year. But next year, they just finished their appraisals of all the properties in Fairfield County. And if anybody's made an additional improvements to their profit, the taxes will be higher next year. But the millage rate will probably be the same.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Any other council member want to be recognized?
Yes, Chairman. I think we need to give our
Go ahead, Mr. Gil.
I think that we should give our electoral commission electoral I, I think that, uh, we should give our electoral commission, uh, elector
election.
Yeah. Permission a real sincere appreciation for the work, the hard work they did during the election. Uh, it was a little bit more testing this year than previous years, but they did a fantastic job, and I think we should really commend them on, on the good job that they done.
I'd have to agree with you. They, they did an excellent job this year, the election commission, so. Mr. Bill?
Um, I would go ahead and try to explain to, to go through that, but there, there's no need because, um, I'm gonna just leave it alone.
Where's they going?
Thank you so much. Uh, good evening to everyone. Uh, first, I just want to thank God for the opportunity that I've had the past four years to serve Fairfield County and the awesome people, this team that I've worked with. You are, are just, um, magnificent. There's no words to say. Your spirit, your work ethics, everything, and we've become a family, and I thank God for that so very much. I'm just in awe of the things that we were able to accomplish in four years. And I've been around Fairfield County quite some time, and I've not seen something, uh, economic wise move in that manner ever. So I'm thankful not saying that other councils, not saying that other councils did not do things during their terms, they did. But for the movement, uh, in the four year term was just awesome. And I also, I just wanted this kind of sidetrack a little bit here. Um, I, I listened to, uh, Councilman Bell as he was praying, and he thanked God for the, uh, new elected president as well as the new elected or vice president. But I also thank God for the president that is because the word tells us that we have to pray for all people. And especially those that sometimes are not in agreement with us, especially for those that do not maybe do the right thing, but we still have to pray for them. So I pray that his life will be turned, his heart will be turned, and he will have a, a better future. I also want to add to those, um, and I'm just have to be honest, that have worked against the will of God, and that's the only way I can put it, to fan the fires of hate and, um, division, not only in the county, but nationwide and worldwide. I ask that God would have mercy on your soul because that is not his will. Also have to say that the president, president, he is not the me, the reason for division in the nation. Division is a decision personally made by every person. We all have a choice. The one that comes in, he cannot heal the nation. That's God's responsibility, but we have to allow him to do that. So again, I thank you all so very much. I'm gonna remain active. I'm gonna remain vocal. You're gonna be seeing me and hearing from me. And I appreciate you so much, and thank God for all the people. I've met so many wonderful people that I did not know that was in Fairfield County. I'm amazed and have some great new friends. So I'm excited going out as I was coming in. Thank you so much.
All right. Uh, any other council member? I think this is, uh, I guess, if not a special meeting, it's probably our only meeting in, uh, November. Guess we only got one more meeting left, so we'll go from there.
But twenty twenty has been a good year.
It has. It has, so. Um, no further. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second it.
It's been moved improperly seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are now adjourned. Thank y'all.
Thank you all.